Call the monthly board meeting order, can you please rise for the pledge allegiance? I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Ms. Lershman make some motion, kind of second.
Second.
Ms. Rouse second, on favor show of hands. Motion carries. Citizen statements.
Thank you, Mr. President, the district has not received any requests for citizens' participation per board policy BDDH.
Military update.
Good afternoon, Minister President, come updates from Fort Leonard Wood, the Spouses Resource Center's grand reopening will be the 30th of January 2024 at 10:00 a.m. Building 470, room 2222. The goal of the Spouses Resource Center is to be the premier enterprise solution for resources and referrals for the three major areas of community, education, and employment resources for Fort Leonard Wood and surrounding communities. Support the military by becoming a blood donor, the Armed Services Blood Program is always in need of donors. The ASBP office is located at building 822, corner of Colorado and Kansas on Fort Leonard Wood, across from Nutter Field House. Open Sunday through Tuesday, 8 to 3:30, and Wednesday, 8 to 2:00, walk-ins are always welcome. You can call 573-596-5385 for more information, Mr. Carl Norman is the coordinator. That is all I have.
Thank you very much. District announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President, Waynesville JROTC Annual Drill Competition will be Saturday, January 20th at Waynesville High School from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. WHS Court Warming has been rescheduled for Friday, February 2nd. At approximately 6:30, it will be between the boys JV and varsity basketball games. WCC Open House will be held Thursday, January 25th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And also for weather reminders, if you're a parent or guardian in the district, you should receive a call, text, and/or email as soon as the decision is made. If you're not receiving these, please contact your child's school to be added. In addition, I'd just like to remind parents to please dress your children appropriately for the cold weather as we hope to be back to school tomorrow. If you have any needs as far as coat, or shoes, or clothing, please reach out to us as we would be happy to help you meet those needs for your children. We really want them to be dressed safely and appropriately in this cold weather. And then lastly, I'd like to end by congratulating our principals, staff, and students for two successful AMI days. I had the privilege of popping in and out of classrooms, and we had very strong attendance, and teachers were teaching very strong, and kids were engaged. So I'd like to thank them and congratulate them. That's all I have for you this evening, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through Y. Ms. Anderson make some motion, I have a second. Ms. Rouse second, on favor show of hands. Six oh motion carries. Community recognition, Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mr. President, this month, the district would like to recognize Walker Real Estate for their donation of ice cream to East Elementary. We appreciate your continued support of Waynesville School District.
We'll move to discussion items, mid-year performance report, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm going to share the data for our middle-of-the-year assessments and priority standards progress. These assessments are utilized to monitor student growth and to make instructional planning decisions as the year progresses. This slide shows standards proficiency at the end of first semester in English Language Arts as compared to the previous four years at this, or the previous three years at this time. At nearly every grade level, the standards proficiency is similar to last year or is higher. Kindergarten has seen the most growth, which is partially attributed to significant changes in the reading program for kindergarten students and the use of science of reading-based strategies that are being utilized in grades K through 2. This slide shows standards proficiency for mathematics at the end of the first semester. At nearly every grade level, the standards proficiency is similar to last year or is higher. Teacher teams regularly use the standards information to make adjustments in instructional delivery and to prioritize standards that need additional intervention. At the middle school, teacher teams meet each week to discuss priority standards, and the teams use information from activities and assessments to guide pacing, reteaching, and intervention decisions. With the exception of Math 7 and Science 8, performance was similar or above proficiency levels at this time last year. In math, the teacher teams are continuing to participate in DNA math training that is provided through a DODIA math grant and are implementing strategies from the training in their daily teaching. Across all content areas, teachers are utilizing explicit direction, direct instruction strategies, also known as EDI for short, that have been taught as part of our professional development days. At the end of first semester at Waynesville High School, with the exception of ELA 9 and 10, proficiency levels are similar or higher than last year at this same time. As with the middle school, math teachers are participating in DNA math training, and core content classes are participating in EDI and Avid training that provide instructional strategies that can be utilized in the classroom to increase engagement, as well as provide new approaches to the course content. These are our, this next set of slides will be the STAR assessments. This is a nationally normed test, and so students across the nation actually take this test, and it is normed at that national level. In addition, STAR early literacy and STAR reading are approved by DESI as one of the exams that we can give to measure early literacy and reading progress for students as part of the reading bill. For STAR, being at the 40th percentile or higher is considered as being on level. For our reporting purposes, we do not use that 40th percentile benchmark, we actually use the 50th percentile as it has a better, it is a better predictor of students proficiency on state assessments. The STAR early literacy test is administered to all kindergarten students three times per year. Overall, proficiency increased from 42% in the fall to 62, 66% in the winter. And our mid-year proficiency levels increased from 58% to 66% when we compare it to last school year. And as with the ELA standards, we really believe that the teaching strategies that teachers have learned through science of reading have contributed to that growth. The STAR reading assessment is given to all students in grades 1 through 10, three times per year. This reflects our mid-year assessment. As with the early literacy test, we use the 50th percentile as opposed to the 40th percentile to measure growth. A student who scores at the 40th percentile means that they scored at or above 50% of students nationwide in the norming group at that grade level. And so the percentages you see on the chart represent the percentage of students scoring at that 50 or higher. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from 28 to 55%. Growth and percentage of students meeting the benchmark was made in all grade levels with the exception of 9th grade when compared to the fall administration. Teachers utilize skills reports from STAR assessment in conjunction with their priority standards information to inform instructional decisions. The data on this slide compares mid-year STAR data for this year to the two previous years. In 2nd, 6th, and 10th grade, the percentage of students meeting the benchmark was higher than last school year. One note, because 1st grade looked like it took quite a dip. The state is actually only using STAR early literacy to measure 1st grade, and we do give that assessment. So while, as it is a better measure of foundational reading skills that 1st grade students would have. And so while they were 33% proficient on the STAR reading test, on the STAR early literacy test, our 1st graders were 55% proficient. And I just wanted to make that note as we look at which tests we'll use with 1st graders in the upcoming years because the state is really saying that that early literacy is a better assessment. This chart shows the percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each elementary building for grades, for our 1st through 5th grade students. This slide shows a scale score to meet the winter benchmark. The average scale score in grades 3 through 7 exceeded the scale score cut mark that meets the benchmark. And on this slide, it shows the average grade level equivalency of our students on the STAR reading test. The average growth from beginning to middle of the year met or exceeded a half-year's growth in grades 1 through 8. The STAR math assessment is used to assess students in the area of math, and all students in grades 1 through 8 are assessed. The percentage of students meeting the benchmark at each grade level ranged from 40 to 74%. Growth was made from beginning of the year assessment to the mid-year assessment in all grade levels. And as with reading, we use the 50th percentile to measure if students meet the benchmark or not. And additionally, as with reading, our teachers do use information from the mid-year STAR reports and standards reports that are available in conjunction with other assessments that they give to inform their instructional planning. This slide compares data from STAR math winter administration last year as compared to this year. Overall, the percentage of students meeting the benchmark remained fairly consistent with last year's levels. And this chart shows our performance in grades 1 through 5 at each of our elementary buildings. On this slide, you can see the scale score to meet the winter benchmark. In grades 1 through 7, the average scale score exceeded the benchmark cut score. This chart shows the average grade level equivalency in grades, across the grade levels. In grades 1 through 7, the average grade level equivalency exceeded or met their current grade level. And additionally, all grade levels, with the exception of 8th grade, made at least a half-year's growth from beginning to end, to middle of year on our testing windows. The data in this report is monitored at the collaborative team level, building level, and district level, and is used to make adjustments in our instructional planning, pacing, and interventions. Teachers use a variety of assessments in order to have multiple data sources that can be utilized as part of the instructional process. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Technology update, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Henson.
Thank you, Mr. President, it's that, that time for the biennial Harrison-Henson technology update. So I'll jump in and start talking about kind of the infrastructure side of technology, and then Mr. Henson will follow up behind me and share on the instructional side of technology. So I'm jumping right in here, for the district, our technology focus areas are to provide and maintain appropriate instructional resources, support services, and a cyber safe environment, and then promote the effective use of technology within our one-to-one environment. So kind of making sure that our students have adequate devices to, to be able to function and use. And then secondly, to be able to make sure that those are used in an infectional, or in, in a way that's promoting the instructional process within the district. These are some pictures here of the new technology storage building that was just finished up recently. And, and so on the left there, that is the warehouse area, so we have a great space now to be able to store computers, printers, projectors, network equipment, supplies and equipments. And then on the right side, you can see one of the work areas there. So that's been a great facility and really benefited the technology department in being able to get things out the door quick. So if they were here tonight, they would definitely want to appreciate, or express appreciation and gratitude for, for that facility. Some of the things that we maintain across the district, from a hardware standpoint, we're up over 15,000 end-user devices now. You know, we maintain the network, of course, partnered in collaboration with K-12 ITC. The same on our data center where all of our servers reside, that's in collaboration with K-12 ITC. Intercoms and clocks, phones, security cameras, the door access control systems. And then from the application standpoint, some of the major things we support is email, the Google suite of products, web, web filter, gaggle, phone call management system, student information system, which is Power School currently, our financial information system, which is currently Munis, and then food services applications. Some of the completed projects this year so far, and recently, we've, we've taken care of about right around 1,500 support tickets since July 1st. Deployed approximately 1,500 Chromebooks this year. We put in new clever boards at the 6th grade center, and then, and then we did an integration with Power School and Class Link and all the learning management systems that we, that we're currently using. This kind of gives you a breakdown here of kind of what it looks like, the day-to-day tickets that we respond to. You can see there that, of course, Chromebooks, you know, we got about 6,000 out there, of them out there. So that's a lot of what we take care of on a daily basis. And then we have, we answer a lot of login and account issues, and issues with copy machines and printers and things like that as well. But that kind of gives you a snapshot of the, the number of tickets that come in for different categories. Some current and upcoming projects, every year, we do our Chromebook replacement cycle where we refresh all the, the ones that are going out of, end of life. And then we are looking at doing a, a high school camera upgrades this year. The, some of the cameras there are fairly old, and so we're going to be replacing some of the older ones, and then also kind of adding some other cameras in key areas that, that we've worked with the high school staff to identify. And then we also, we're currently doing a district door access updates across the district where we're going through and, and adding some additional FOB access and things of that nature. And then also this year, a big project that we're going to be doing towards the end of this, this school year is the network refresh. We'll be replacing all of our network switches and next, and wireless access points. Some things on the horizon from a technology standpoint, cybersecurity is always a big one, we're always looking out for threats coming down. You know, they're always out there trying to find new ways to, to act interior systems, so we're always on the lookout for that. Clever boards and projectors, so those are a big thing that Mr. Henson and I are kind of always evaluating. Some of our projectors out there in the district are, are kind of old, so, and there's a lot of new technology coming down for that, clever boards and a lot of different things. And so Mr. Henson and I are kind of evaluating that and looking ahead to the future for what we'll do in some of those areas. Some other trends in educational technology, virtual reality is coming out to be a, you know, pretty big thing coming down the pike. And then, of course, artificial intelligence, you know, you hear about that every day now. So there's a lot of potential implications for AI in the educational environment as well. So we're, those are some of the things that we're looking out for.
All right, good evening, let's share a little bit on the instructional side of technology. So the first thing is our one-to-one program, which we call Project Edge. It started around 2018, Edge was an acronym for Educating Our Digital Generation Effectively at the time. And currently on our district webpage, we have a Project Edge link that provides relevant information for our families. There's an informational video on there, along with an FAQ section. All students within the district have some sort of device. So our students at Williams and Parker, they have carts of iPads. And if we logged on to AMI today, we saw little preschoolers with iPads in their laps. And I know Mrs. Bell saw some sitting on their parents' laps during the AMI with their iPads. And then all K through 12th graders have Chromebooks. And we work with Aaron, we try to recycle those and replace those as needed. But I, at this time, I'd like to go back and think around 2008, 17. So 2018's when we really were able to go one-to-one. But we were able to do that because in 2017, we had a tax levy. And we, and we promised at that time that any money that was generated would be spent on two things, security and technology. And that money has only been spent on security and technology. So because of that, we were able to go one-to-one sooner than we expected. So I'd like to thank our, our patrons for that during that time. So we also have our one-to-one risk solution, which is our optional insurance. Currently, we have around 652 that have paid for a damage waiver protection. A little bit about our collaboration or blended learning. In each of our bigger buildings, we have an instructional tech. All of our instructional techs were classroom teachers, every one of them. So they are a great resource to have within our buildings that can help our teachers as they work through their standards. They keep a chart for me, they log how many collaboration sessions they've had with teachers. You can see here, but one of our focus areas is blended learning, where we take our old-school teaching and blend it with technology. We don't want to walk in a classroom and see just technology or just the old-school teaching. We want to see a good mix of that, and so our instructional techs help with that process. But one, one of the focus areas with our blended learning this past year has been the digital citizenship piece. And that's so important because our students now are engaged in platforms and things with technology that they need to be equipped with the information to know how to protect themselves while they're out there online. This top picture here shows one of my instructional techs, looks like she's with a kindergarten or 1st grade classroom. There's a little mat, they're doing letter sounds, and you really can't see on that little mat, but there's like a little robot that they code, and it tells it which space to move to, and, and they do their letter sounds. And the bottom picture here is of our middle school library, our tech is way up there in the corner, and she's doing a digital citizenship lesson with the health class. So another one of our action steps in our CSEP is typing practice. We currently use Typing Club. I know I really never learned to type until I was in high school, my sophomore, junior year maybe. But now we have kindergartners, 1st graders, 2nd graders, learning to type. And we do set a goal for them, and we, that goal is five words per minute times their grade level. So if they're a 1st grader at the end of the year, we would like for them to be typing five words per minute. If they're a 3rd grader, we would like for them to be typing 15 words per minute. So that's the goal we set for them, and you can kind of see there in that chart, I know it's small, kind of where they're at in meeting that goal. We do have Typing Club in grades K through 8. Keyboarding and typing, with it being integrated within two assignments and assessments. It's all the way across the board, especially within our blended learning. But the big platforms that we use in the elementary is Google Classroom. At the secondary level, our learning management system, our LMS is Canvas, I'm sure we've all heard of that. And then Mastery Connect is our assessment platform that integrates with Canvas. And then all of our online textbooks anymore have a robust system that students can go into where they can integrate with assignments and assessments and practice those test-taking skills that they need to test, they need for end-of-year state testing. So I wanted to show this slide with technology and student learning, because so many times when we think of technology, we think of some sort of like computer, a laptop, a Chromebook in front of them, but it's more than that. And as you can see, technology helps increase student engagement, provides creativity, helps students become problem solvers, and also encourages teamwork, just as this after-school club here with this little guy taking, it's a photo club that they have after school at one of our post schools. In the middle is one of our smart boards, we have a kindergarten there doing counting. And with our smart boards at our kindergarten and 1st grade level, they're on adjustable mounts, so we can bring them down to the kid's level. We don't want them there just for a teacher to use, they're there for student use, that's why we get them, so they're down where students can come up and use them. We have a picture there in front of the greens, green screen, hopefully that's some of, those are future Mr. Wallace students there, they are middle school students. They are middle school students, and they're Tiger News Network. And then down in the bottom picture is in one of our library media centers. All these students have iPads, but they're doing coding. You can't see the little robots, but they have them going all over that library, and that's where that photo is. Lastly, so many times I show technology pictures at the elementary level. So I wanted to make sure, I know WCC was to be here tonight, and it was their building focus. So I wanted to show, I received some great pictures from WCC, because there is all kinds of blended learning, all sorts of technology going on at WCC every day. And these are just some photos, whether it's from one of the business classes where that teamwork's going on, those ladies up there presenting to our welding. There's technology involved everywhere. You see the little microscopes going on down there, that's in our ag class. And of course, Mr. Wallace and his team and their phenomenal trailer that they have, so. So that's what I have. You have any questions for Mr. Harrison or myself?
So, Mr. Henson, in regard to the damage waiver protection, what is the cost on that for a device?
So if they are non-free reduced, it's twenty dollars, if they're free and reduced, it's ten dollars.
And then what would be the consequences if they didn't have that damage waiver protection and a device was broken?
So if the device is broken, let's say a screen, let's say it's something that would just happen with a device. You know, a track pad went bad on it, because that does happen. If it's nothing that the kid did, then the track pad would be replaced because it'd be under warranty. But if it's something that was intentional damage, or they purposely did something to it, and then our tech guys would do the replacement. They would say, replacement calls for a screen or a track pad or whatever. They would share it with the secretary in their building, and then she would put in a claim, and that would be pushed out and emailed the parents.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you both.
District Wellness Update, Mrs. Long.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you about both staff and student wellness tonight. First, want to just visit and remind everyone, we do have a CSEP goal that's focused on wellness, and that is to increase awareness and accessibility to available wellness support services and activities, both for our staff and students. We want to increase our offerings and also people's ability to know about them and to utilize them. One thing that has really helped propel our wellness programs within our district are having building wellness representatives. So each school building within our district has a teacher who attends my quarterly wellness meetings. And they are provided, and this started through the Teacher Retention Grant, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar annual stipend for their time and energy that they give to this. But what's really been, they've really helped initiatives that we've done get more focused within the building, because then each building has someone who knows and who pushes it out themselves. We will send something out district-wide, you know, here's this opportunity, here's something that we have, and that'll go out in a district email. But then a week or two later, they will push it out to their staff, or they'll talk to people in the hallway. Or we've asked them to do in-person commercials in their faculty meetings, so that, you know, oh yeah, remember that email? That's what they were talking about, and get that buzz going and be someone there. They may not always have the answers, but they could bring those questions back and get them. So their awareness and help in just sharing that information out has been tremendous in the past two years. Good to touch on real briefly what we provide for staff in the way of education, benefits, and facilities. For education, one thing for the, really, since we were in the middle of COVID and since we've been trying to advertise, and I know our participation, we don't get participation numbers, but I do know from the questions that we get, the participation in our EAP program has grown. And again, that offers all sorts of wellbeing tools for all of our staff, including free counseling and emotional wellbeing tools on there. Last year, we were fortunate, we had a one-year grant that we received that provided reimbursement for staff members for mental health expenses. So they were able to submit those and get those covered throughout last year. Our wellness team and building reps have worked this year to promote the DUCY Teach Well program. That's just a series of courses, short courses offered by DUCY for educator wellness, and so they've helped in the promotion of that program. We offered onsite staff classes on nutrition. Some of our partners out at Fort Leonard Wood came from the dietetics nutrition world and gave some classes for our staff. We've also had staff within our own district offer stress and stretch management classes for our staff as well, for their colleagues. We continue to offer CPR and AED training for our staff. And we have a quarterly wellness newsletter for our district staff as well as quarterly staff challenges. Having those building wellness reps, they, again, really promote and advertise these challenges. They collect the paperwork from the challenges and submit them to the district. That has helped really increase participation numbers in those. Over the past few years, we've seen that grow immensely since they've come on board. And they've also given really good input as to what staff likes. And so we've differentiated our challenges and given some different options the past few quarters based on their feedback. Staff benefits, we have tried to really promote preventative care. We offer health risk assessments for our staff members that do have district insurance onsite. The past several years, the health departments provided COVID vaccinations onsite, flu shots. Flu shots were available again this year, both through our district insurance and through the COMC clinic, free of charge for our staff and for students. Reminders of wellness incentives, one thing, Melissa Ash in the operations office, she does a great job of sharing out some of the really underutilized benefits we have. For example, the flyer there is for a fifty-dollar reimbursement for having a wellness exam. You know, it's money sitting out there. If you have the district insurance and you go to that appointment, it's just a reminder. And so it's a reminder that that's out there, and they can utilize that as an incentive. We have onsite testing, our school nurses can swab students and staff for both COVID and the flu, A and B. So that's something that the state released last year, and we were able to join that, which is great. It gives people really quick-timed answers whenever they're not feeling well, and can help them start the process of healing quickly and know what to do at that point. And also, our school-based health clinic onsite at East Elementary continues to operate for, and is, our staff are some of the biggest users of that clinic. Staff facilities, this is something that, so our staff gym, which opened last year, and we, you know, located behind the district office in the basement of that beautiful tech building that Mr. Harrison showed the other side of the wall from the gym earlier. But it's open twenty-four-seven, so our district employees can go there with a swipe card. Last year, when it first opened, we had several, I had a couple of coaches that I asked to come in, and they did some nights of orientation. If you wanted to come in, they'd show you how to use the equipment. One of them, she's real passionate, she'd even, I think she even wrote a workout plan for a couple of people. But they were there to help with that. And then also, we've been pushing out, we pushed out a timely reminder right at the beginning of the year that this is open, and it's open twenty-four-seven, and it's free. And I will say, the number of cars that I've noticed around that building and the after-school time is increasing. So that's great that we're, I believe we're getting a lot more utilization of that. Figure with New Year's resolutions, remind them we got a free gym there. For students, talk about physical and social-emotional wellness as well. Students' physical wellness, again, our school-based health clinic at East Elementary is open for our students and families. One thing that they have done the past two years for us that's been a great service is they stepped up and provided free physicals for a pretty long time period, and quite a few were given out of that clinic this year. We really appreciate that. They also provided onsite, again, free flu shots for our students. They have a mobile dental unit who serviced close to one hundred. They were right under one hundred students this year, almost doubling the numbers from last year that they saw for screenings in their mobile unit. And so they, and they come and they go around to each building and service the students there as well. Again, our students have the availability of the COVID and flu tests as well. We also have free at-home COVID tests that we can send home with staff or students in case they may not be feeling well, they want to test at home, and/or maybe they are positive and they want to test to see when they're not positive anymore. We can send those home as well for free. We've been promoting the free feminine hygiene products that are secondary are in all schools. And also, one reminder for physical wellness is our district facilitates snack in a pack. A hundred percent volunteer-driven program that's really, you know, great service to feed our students within our district. And it is entirely run by the district with their partnerships with the AmeriCorps program. Student emotional support, one thing I neglected to list was our Leader in Me program, which does provide lessons, social-emotional lessons for students now in grades K through eight within our district. But we also have COMC therapists onsite. Very excited, they are, we have a new one beginning. I think she's, hopefully she'll start whenever we come back at some point in January. But she'll be servicing East, so we'll have one at Freedom, at East, sixth-grade middle school and high school all have services available once she's fully on board from COMC therapists. Military family life consultants, again, got word over the break that they're filling their last open vacancy for that. So all of our buildings, K through twelve, will have influx back in it as soon as the paperwork finishes on the last one. Hope Squad, we've had in sixth grade last year, and seventh and eighth grade is, they're actually going through their training right now to implement that there as well. Signs of Suicide lessons in nine through twelve. With the last year, the rollout nationally and the promotion statewide of the suicide hotline, the nine-eight-eight number, that really was something that we worked to get promoted. The information is on all student ID cards, it's up in our restrooms. You know, just really promoting that that's available as well as what's available for our students. We hosted a guest speaker, there's a picture down there of Chris Heron, who came and spoke to our students last spring it was, on really decision-making and how one decision can lead to, you know, major changes within your life. We are booking our next students' speaker currently for this spring as well. Youth Mental Health First Aid Training for Staff, this is something that's been offered again free through DUCY. We offered two classes, we offered, they let us have one free class per year, but then they had a little bit left over at the end of last year. So we got two in last year, and then they came back this fall, and we filled up a class for them. So that's been really nice for us to have teachers in grades six through twelve trained in the youth mental health first aid. They really appreciate that, and it's great to have that number of staff trained. We did a whole lot of work on focusing on kindergarten SEL, including a summer school curriculum that had a strong focus on that as well as school readiness. Updating counselor SEL lessons has been an ongoing process. And then also, this year during our PD days, we've worked with our specials areas, not just in elementary, but spreading K through twelve on implementing mindfulness activities in art, music, and PE. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Long, I do wonder, you mentioned dental and physicals, are we still doing eye checks for students?
Yes, yeah. So we, actually, the district bought, I do not know the name, but the technology screener that can, that KidSite uses to screen with our students as well. And they do those at certain elementary grade levels, they do mass screenings, but then we also have it onsite. Yeah, that's, I have a child who got, had an issue identified by that.
Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Thank you.
Move to action items, budget revision, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go over the PowerPoint presentation here, kind of outlining the whole January revision at the end of that. Then we'd be seeking a motion to approve the revised budget for this year. So jumping into the revised budget here, so our budget development goals, as we develop the budget each year, are to support the district vision and mission, maintain competitive salary schedules, maintain a quality employee benefit package, plan for the future with consideration of student needs and student population in mind, then also to address current facility needs. Before I get into this year's current budget, I always like at this time of year to kind of go back and show how FY23 was ended and closed out. So this is our finalized FY23 budget from last year. So as you can see there, from an operation standpoint, we started last year with about twenty-one-point-nine million, and then we ended last year with about twenty-two-point-four million, and that represents about a thirty percent reserve balance. And so if you look at the year prior's operational expenditures and how much money we've got left at the end of the year, that basically says, without receiving any revenues at all, we can operate for about thirty percent of the year, which comes out to about three and a half months. And so thirty percent reserve is a good place to be. Our CSEP goals from that aspect are to be within a twenty-five to thirty percent range, and so we're on the upper end of that range. And then if you look across the state of Missouri, a thirty percent reserve balance is a strong place to be, so we're in good shape there. So jumping into the current year, FY24, so looking at revenues, local revenues. There's multiple local revenue sources, but the vast majority of those are local taxes and propcy. So as you can see there, there's been a big, kind of a big incline there over the last, from FY22 through current. So the last two years, you know, back during COVID, there was a big spike in real estate and car values, personal property values. So the assessed valuation within the district boundaries has pretty substantially increased. And so with that, the revenues increased as well. So this year, we're projected to receive right about twenty-four-point-six million of local revenues. Going on to state revenues, this year we're looking fairly flat, going up to about thirty-eight million dollars in state revenues. Federal revenues, the majority of this is Impact Aid, which I'll speak on a little bit more here later. But as you can see here, and then we always budget our federal revenues very conservatively because of that Impact Aid piece and the volatile nature of it. You know, you can see there, in previous years, it kind of spikes and it gets different each year. But we typically project around ten million in basic support, about five million of the B2 funds. And then, you know, and then it's kind of going out and making, and then doing the best we can to make sure that we bring those funds in. But as of right now, we're projecting right around twenty-five million dollars total for federal revenues. And then going on to expenditures here, looking at from an expenditure standpoint. So this pie here kind of represents the big portions of our expenditure budget. So around sixty percent is salaries, and around sixteen percent is benefits for our employees. So, you know, around seventy-six percent total of our operating budget is made up of salary and benefits that goes to our employees. And then if you look a little bit further there, so around fifteen percent of that is purchased services, and then around nine percent of that is supplies. Kind of a chart here showing historical graph of our employee and salary benefits expenditures. And so you can see over the last three years or so, we've increased quite a bit. We've kind of put a focus on staying very competitive with our salaries. And so the result of that has been good on the certified side. We're currently within the top two positions of all the comparable districts that we look at. So our work there has done well on that end of it. For this year, we're looking at spending, projected right around forty-eight-point-seven million dollars total for employee salary and benefits. Purchased services, this number has continued to climb over the year, and you'll see this in pretty much any district you look at across the state of Missouri, as the trend continues to kind of outsource things like food services, technology, HVAC, PennMac, that we do all of our substitute and like extra hourly pay help kind of stuff, their purchase service as well. So that has kind of trended up over the last few years. Projected spend right around nineteen million dollars this year. That's something that we kind of keep an eye out on every year as that continues to climb. Food services expenditures, the spike there in twenty-one and twenty-two, that's mainly related to all the extra things we did during COVID, with all the extra meals that we served and took out to the community and things like that. So for FY24, we're kind of back down to a more normal trend there, which is right around three-point-five million. Transportation expenditures, the spike there in twenty-two and twenty-three was related to the building project that we had up there, the renovation that they have up there now, transportation. So that's, that number's kind of coming back down to more normal as well. So for FY24, we're projected to spend right at four-point-six million dollars in transportation. And then our capital project expenditures, this is where we do all of our building projects, our renovations, all of our big maintenance items and things of that nature. all of our big maintenance items and things of that nature. As you can see, over the last few years, we spent anywhere from about twelve point six to up around seventeen million. For this year, we're projected to spend right around seventeen million, depending on the timing of a lot of our projects that we have going on currently. Lease purchase agreements, we currently have one lease purchase agreement left, and this originated from the Freedom Elementary project. And so the current payment is right about one point four million on that. And so we're projected to have that paid off in FY twenty-nine. I apologize for the extra FY twenty-nine there, I'm not sure what, why that's there, but we are projected to have that one paid off as of FY twenty-nine. Total district expenditures for this year, this is whenever you take into operating items and capital projects and everything together, we're projected to spend right around ninety-eight point three million dollars. And you can kind of see the climb over there over the last few years. I know that's a little bit of a sticker shock, so I wanted to kind of show, you know, typically, this time of year, when we're coming in with the January revision, we're coming in with our budget, with everything that we could potentially spend. And then the rest of the year, we're spending our time trying to make sure we spend minimal amounts everywhere. So we budget, and this kind of shows you over the years, the blue lines, the dark blue lines on the left are where the January revised amount was projected to be, and then the gray bars next to those is where we actually ended up at the end of the year. So using that trend, even though, you know, we're projected currently, our budget's currently projected to about ninety-eight million dollars, I would anticipate we're going to be more around the ninety-two point five to ninety-five million dollar mark of actual expenditures at the end of this, this fiscal year. And this, this summary here kind of shows, it's the same snapshot of the FY twenty-three, but this is kind of where we're projected to end up at the end of FY twenty-four. So from a operational standpoint, we started this year with about twenty-two point four million dollars, and we're projected to end with about twenty-three million dollars, so. And then overall, if you look over on the total side on the right, you can see there, we're, we're projected to, we started the year with about sixty-three point seven million, projected in with about fifty-four point five. And then, but that's, that's likely to change as well, and that's mainly due to our capital projects, because a lot of the, we plan for the capital projects as if they're going to be done this fiscal year, but a lot of the, most of the projects drag into, to another, to the next fiscal year. And then also, as I was speaking about the Impact Aid dollars before, and that we conservatively budget those, I would expect to actually probably receive a little bit more B two money than what was projected there. So I actually expect that number to be much closer to the sixty-three million dollar mark at the end of this year. Some highlights, state revenues remain relatively flat for this year, but some good news coming down the road, as long as everything holds, as, as they're saying it is now. The state is gonna, they're supposed to be raising the, the state adequacy target, which is the number that they give you per student that you have in your district. And so they're supposed to raise it fairly significantly in FY twenty-five, and then another bump in FY twenty-six. So as long as that holds up, then we'll be, we should experience a, a pretty good increase in state revenues for both FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. SR three allocations, so we received a total of five point nine million dollars, and we've distributed those funds over the last three years. FY twenty-four will be the last year that we'll receive that, that funding. And then just a reminder that twenty percent of that had to be spent to bridge the learning gap from COVID. And then, so that, that amounted to about one point two million dollars that we've spent on things like summer school and extra, extra support after hours for students and things of that nature. And then, as I've mentioned before, FY twenty-four is the last year to receive those funds. And I showed you before as well, purchase services continue to increase. That's something that we'll continue to kind of keep our eye on. And then everything out of my whole presentation here, this, this is the most important thing out of, that I have to point out here. So heavily impacted B two eligibility for FY twenty-four. So we are currently eligible for B two, but the future for B two eligibility is in danger due to the narrow margin we're facing with the local tax effort. So that's one thing that we're going to have to really focus on. And, you know, the, the thing that we struggle with at this point is the local tax effort piece. And so that's, that B two amount amounts to eight point five million dollars per year that we're threat, we're threatened to lose if we don't do something with our local tax effort. So if we want to maintain eligibility and maintain that eight point five million dollars, that's something we're going to have to keep a close eye on in, in the future, and we're going to have to do something about it soon if we want to keep that eight point five million dollars coming in. Is there questions on any of that?
Any comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the FY twenty-four revised budget? Mr. Anderson makes a motion, does second?
Second.
Harman second, all in favor, show hands. Motion carries. Annual School Board Election Ballot, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The final date to file for the Board of Education candidacy was December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. The proposed ballot format of board candidates for the April second, two thousand twenty-four election will be submitted to the Pulaski County Clerk prior to the deadline of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The candidates are Janelle Rau, David Griffin, Mike Keeling, and Richard Oxendine. I make a motion to approve the ballot language for the annual school board election.
Do I have a motion? So, next motion, does second? Mr. Anderson second, all in favor, show hands? Motion carries. Twenty twenty-four Summer School Proposal, Dr. Ackerman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed twenty twenty-four Summer School Program will be conducted from May thirtieth through June twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-four. Summer school locations will be determined based on enrollment numbers. Some schools may be consolidated to one site for summer school. Breakfast and lunch will be served at each location, and a limited number of virtual course offering offerings will be available at the high school level. Administration requests approval of the twenty twenty-four Summer School Program as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Anderson makes a motion, does second?
Second.
Ralph second, all in favor, show hands? Six oh, motion carries. Job description, Dr. Go forth.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job descriptions are presented for your review as a second reading. Two point four, seven point one, Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Two point zero, one point one, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Services. Three point one, nine point six A, Certified Occupational Therapist Assistant. Three point zero, zero point nine, Coordinator of Grant Management. Two point two, eight point two, District Special Education Process Coordinator. Two point one, five point four, Executive Director of Elementary Education. Two point one, five point five, Executive Director of Secondary Education. Two point one, six point two, Executive Director of Student Services. Four point one, two point six, Information Systems Specialist. Two point two, one point two, Tech Coordinator. Four point oh, eight point one A, Executive Secretary of Personnel Services Superintendent. Four point oh, eight point two, Personnel Services Secretary. Administration requests approval as presented.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Anderson makes a motion, does second? Ms. Rouse second, all in favor, show hands? Six oh, motion carries. Increased local tax levy, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned, Mr. Harrison noted that we were hanging on to the local effort piece of B two by a razor-thin margin at ninety-five point one three percent. Fortunately, they don't round up, so even if we went to ninety-four point nine nine, we would fall out of B two eligibility. This is something that the district has been working on informing our public about for quite some time. At this time, we are going to make a motion to approve a resolution to place a ten cent tax levy on the ballot for the April second, two thousand twenty-four election for the purposes of, number one, securing B two heavily impacted aid. However, any additional revenue that that ten cents tax levy would generate would go towards continued increased security, and then also preschool expansion. This is not something that we recommend lightly, as we know that nobody likes to pay more taxes. However, it's important to maintain the quality of life that we have provided in this district for quite some time. So with that, I make a motion to approve the ten cent levy increase on the ballot for April.
Any comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Anderson makes a motion, does second? Mr. Ponder makes a second, show hands? Six oh, motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Rouse makes a, does second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson second, all in favor, show hands? And that is a wrap.